And welcome to this meeting on October 21st, 2019 of the Wayne Westland Board of Education. We appreciate you being here this evening. We'd like to begin the meeting with the Pledge of Allegiance to the Flag, led by Kenny Gagnon, Charley Grant, and Savannah Quarles from Hamilton Elementary School.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic of Washington, one nation under God. And the principle of the United is law.
Great job. Mr. Neal?
Yes, we have three wonderful students. Kenny Gagnon, he's a fifth grade student in Mrs. Green's class at Hamilton Elementary School. His birthday is January 18th, and he was born in Texas. But then he moved to Guam and lived there for five years. His mom is a retired Air Force airman. She worked on the flight line. His favorite subject is social studies, and he likes history a lot. When he's not at school, he likes to play with his pets. His pets are, his dog is Cora. His four cats are Maisy, Jazzy, Gracie, and Cat, which is my favorite name. Plays with his tablet and draws, he likes that as well. His favorite food is tacos, and when he grows up, he wants to be a mechanical engineer or a neurosurgeon. His favorite thing about Hamilton is the positive spirit. And then we have Charley. Charley Grant is a fifth grade student in Mrs. Wade's class at Hamilton Elementary. Her favorite subject at school is reading, and the thing she likes best about Hamilton is that we don't allow bullying. Charley's birthday is October 8th, and when she grows up, she wants to be a zoologist. When Charley is not at school, she likes to play freeze tag, and her favorite food is cod. And the young lady with the microphone in her hand is Savannah Quarles, second grade student in Mrs. Snyder's class at Hamilton Elementary School. Savannah's birthday is July 30th. When she is not at school, she likes to do gymnastics, and Savannah wants to be a firefighter when she grows up. And because I used to be one, I could give you a couple of hints if you have time later. Savannah's favorite subject in school is gym, and she likes the best, she likes the best thing about Hamilton is the fun that we have at Hamilton. It's lots of fun. Thank you, Savannah.
I would like to begin. Charlie, thank you for leading us in the pledge. This is an award of recognition presented from Charlie Grant of Hamilton Elementary School for participation in the flag ceremony during a regular meeting of the Board of Education of the Wayne Westland Community Schools, October 21st. Would you like to introduce anybody that came with you this evening?
My mom.
Is the principal here, any chance?
Yeah, it's Michael.
Good job. In just a minute, we're gonna, we're gonna do one more thing. Savannah, I would like to present you with this award of recognition, presented to Savannah Quarles, Hamilton Elementary School, for participation in the flag ceremony during a regular meeting of the Board of Education of the Wayne Westland Community Schools. Congratulations and thanks.
Savannah, who came with you today? Who brought you here?
My nona and pep. My nona and pep.
Oh. Where's nona and pep? Thank you, good job. And Kenny, will you come over here next to me, please? Kenny, this is an award of recognition presented to Kenny Gagnon, Hamilton Elementary School, for participation in the flag ceremony during a regular meeting of the Board of Education of the Wayne Westland Community School District. Thank you very much. And what we'd like to do is get a photograph of all of you. If you would come up back here. Pardon me? Oh, I'm sorry, Kenny.
I would like to say my uncle Josh, my grandma, and my mother, who all amazing people.
The apple, the apple doesn't fall very far from the tree, let me tell you. Can we go up back here, and we're gonna take a picture of you all? And would all the family like to come up and stand here so you can be in the picture, please? And the principal?
Savannah, can you stand, stand up for the picture, please?
Savannah, go up on your knees on the chair, honey. Be very careful, okay?
Yeah.
Oh, that one with the skills, we don't have to worry.
Yeah. She's a gymnast.
Hands bring off over there.
She is a gymnast.
All right. Good job.
There you go.
Thank you to our students from Hamilton, and thank you to Principal Kelly Michaels. Mr. Neal, call the roll, please.
Yes, we have Ms. Hines.
Present.
Myself also present, Mr. Buckaloo.
Here.
Mrs. Madell, absent. Mrs. Walker.
Present.
Dr. Weaver, not here. And Mr. Cox.
Present.
We have five here, two absent.
And let the record reflect that both Dr. Weaver and Mrs. Madell contacted the chair prior to the meeting with other engagements preventing them from being here this evening. They're both excused. Next item on the agenda is the citizens' comments on agenda items. This is the portion of the meeting where citizens wishing to address the board on any item that appears on the agenda is welcome to do so now. We ask that you fill out a blue form to do so. And I have one here from Mabel Strowman. Good evening, Mabel.
Good evening. As my form says, I'm still waiting for the information I requested October 1st. I have not received a phone call nor an email.
It says here on the forum that you're looking for information on the investigation? And a copy of a letter?
The letter that you sent, you read at the meeting?
That's available on our website.
I didn't know that.
Yeah, it's available on our website.
I was told that it would be sent to me.
Also, the information regarding the disposition of any matter, as you know, it's a public issue.
True.
And it's available to you through FOIA. And I invite you to FOIA whatever documentation that you'd like to have.
I was waiting for your phone call. You instructed me you would call me.
Well, what I, here's what I'm gonna tell you.
Okay, I'm listening.
Everything that I had to say, I said in writing and placed it, said it that night, and also placed it on the website. And with respect to any matter involving the previous superintendent, I'm not going to have a conversation with you about it.
I didn't ask words.
Let me finish. It's a legal issue. It's been handled by our attorneys. It's completely disposed of. And all of the records and anything else that you'd like to have access to is available to you under the Freedom of Information Act.
I understand.
To talk to any person to obtain that. You represent the press, ma'am?
No, I do not. I am a taxpayer.
Okay.
And I asked the question at the October 1st meeting. You stated to me, "I will call you." And I've been waiting for your call. Now, if you didn't want to call, all you had to do was to email me or even my, that's a cell phone number I gave, text me and says, "I can't talk to you." And I would have been more appreciative of that information. I wasn't trying to put anybody on the spot, I just wanted information.
I, I don't feel put on the spot. I really can't be put on the spot about this. As you can understand, this is a legal issue. And I'm not, just not at liberty to discuss it openly or on a, in a telephone conversation.
I understand that. I am only saying I asked the question, and you made the statement. I didn't make it, you did.
Well, the information that you're asking for regarding the investigation, that's available through FOIA. And with respect to the letter, that's on the website. I don't see any other issue here.
That was the only issue I had.
All right.
I appreciate it. But I'm still a little disappointed. I could have been responded to. Because you and your PR person said I would get this information, and that's all I'm asking for. Why didn't I get it?
Okay, as I said, it's available to you.
Thank you.
Is there anyone else that would like to address the board on items that appear on the agenda? Saying none, we'll move on to the next issue on the agenda, which is a consent calendar, 424.19. Do I hear a motion on consent? Moved it up. Moved by Mr. Buckaloo, support?
Support.
Support by Mr. Neal. Roll call vote?
Mr. Neal, yes. Mr. Buckaloo?
Yes.
Mrs. Madell, not here. Mrs. Walker?
Yes.
And Mrs., or Ms. Hines?
Yes.
And President Cox?
Yes.
Five yea.
Motion passes. Next item on the agenda, 425.19, is Board of Education Committee reports. The Finance Committee report summary from Mr. Buckaloo.
Yes, thank you very much. The October 3rd meeting was called to go order at 11:00 a.m. In attendance were Jill Simmons, interim superintendent, David Kling, Director of Finance, Kim Markey, Grants Management and Purchasing Supervisor, Tamara Fox, Administrative Assistance for, Assistant for the Board of Education, Gina Montea, Energy Management Supervisor, Yvonne Scott, Administrative Assistant Recorder, Doug Underwood, representing McCarthy Smith, Carl Vanderzee, Communication by Design, Bill Weinrock, representing TMP Associates, Carol Madell, Mark Neal, and myself, representing the Board of Education. Following introductions, Mr. Vanderzee shared his proposal to use bond funds to purchase batteries to back up switches already being installed that support building security and communication systems. Each battery will surface up to, service up to five switches as a lifespan of three to five years. Interim Superintendent Simmons stated that the board attorney is in the process of revising our contract with McCarthy Smith regarding district renovations using bond funds. These are technical corrections and will likely continue with each of our contractors moving forward. Mr. Underwood shared his concerns that proposed changes for Ford Career Tech may be underfunded and is requesting unused sinking fund money from 2018-19, and additional sinking fund money from 2019-20, up to $1.49 million being reserved for these additional costs. Mr. Underwood made it clear that this entire sum may not be needed, and that in any case, the bond money would be spent before sinking fund monies. Bid packages for William D. Ford and Wayne Memorial will be finalized and presented to the Finance Committee at our December 5th meeting and to the board at the regular board meeting on December 16th of this year. Mr. Vanderzee brought us up to date on security upgrades. He has developed a bid schedule that addresses four separate categories for each of the buildings being renovated. The actual installations will occur at the time each building undergoes renovation. The four categories are cabling, public address systems, clock systems, and the building access control system. Mr. Vanderzee has secured some federal funding for the cabling and some state funding for building access codes, controls. Bids will be reviewed in, in November before coming to the Finance Committee. Mr. Kling presented an investment report summary indicating little change, but suggesting that interest rates we receive on our investments were likely to fall in the coming months, which would prompt us to perhaps make some changes in the future. Mr. Kling also presented the committee with an expenditure spreadsheet that will make it much easier for the committee to compare district expenses year to year, and might add that not just the committee, but the board should benefit from, from that document. And of the really good news, interim superintendent Simmons shared with the, with us the fourth Wednesday student count that occurred on October 2nd, and preliminary indications are positive. This count is extremely important to us because it will determine about 90% of the district funding for this year. Meeting was adjourned at 12:10 p.m.
Thank you for your report, Mr. Buckaloo. Next item on the agenda is 426.19, which is the recommendation to purchase road salt. Sounds pretty exciting, Mrs. Simmons.
I'm going to turn this over to Mr. Devon Kling.
Okay. Thank you, Mr. President. I'm requesting board approval to purchase a planned quantity of 700 tons of road salt from Detroit Salt Company. Road salt was bid through MI Deal Purchasing Cooperative, and Detroit Salt Company is the low bidder. The district will not be ordering early fill salt for the 1920 school year. The district will reserve, the district will reserve 700 tons of salt. The 700 tons will be purchased throughout the winter season at a rate of $52.38 per ton for a total cost of $36,666. The seasonal backup total is $6,202 less than the 2018-19 rate.
Thank you, Mr. Kling.
I think I have a couple more. Under the MI Deal contract, the district is required to take delivery of at least 80% of the reserve amount, or 560 tons. The contract terms also require Detroit Salt Company to guarantee 130% of the reserved amount to ensure an ample supply of available in case of a heavier winter. This excess salt would be purchased at the rate of $52.38 per ton. The salt will be funded through the Maintenance and Operation Department General Fund.
Thank you. Is there a motion?
I'll have one question.
Yeah. Have a motion first? Is there a motion?
I'll make the motion.
Motion by Buckaloo, support?
Support.
Support by Neal, discussion?
Yes, so how, how much salt do we have left over from last year? Like, what do you do with the salt from previous years?
I don't know though, I don't know that at this time.
Do they store it someplace, or?
I'm guessing, I don't know that at this time, I have to find that out.
It's like a Tony question?
Normally, what we would have is we would use, and this is based on districts, if they do store it, they would use their last year's storage. And then this would just, once they use that up, they would continue with this tonnage. But that's probably a Tony question.
Okay.
Are there discussions, Buckaloo?
Yeah, usually we, we use up all the sort of salt that's in the initial purchase, and then moving forward, we're only taking what we need. So at the, at the end of the, at the end of the season, if there's any salt left at all, it's a very small amount. It's certainly nothing that would get us started for the, for the following year.
Thank you.
Other discussion? Roll call vote, please, Mr. Neal?
Mr. Buckaloo?
Yes.
Mrs. Walker?
Yes.
Ms. Hines?
Yes.
Myself, yes. President Cox?
Yes.
Five yea. Motion carries.
Number two is recommendation to purchase uninterruptible power supply units. Mr. Kling?
Thank you, Mr. President. I'm requesting board approval to purchase UPS units, or otherwise known as uninterruptible power supply units, for all of Wayne Westland Community School building districts, uh, school, I'm sorry. Wayne Westland Community School buildings district wide as recommended, recommended by Jamison DeValle, the network administrator. Units will be installed in each MDF main distrib-, main distribution frame and IDF, intermediate distribution frame, in each building. These units will allow the technology department to provide working phones, cameras, and connectivity in the event of a power outage or brownout. The units will also serve as a safeguard for our equipment in the event of brownouts and electrical surges. Presidio of Wicksum, Michigan, was selected as the winning bid for the UPS units. All bids were submitted via various competitive bid state programs. The total cost of the equipment will not exceed $124,076. The purchase will be charged to the 2018 technology bond account.
Thank you, Mr. Kling. Is there a motion? So moved by Mr. Buckaloo, support?
Support.
Support by Mr. Neal, discussion?
I have a question. Is this different from the switches that we approved last month? Or is it all along the same line?
This is to work in concert with that equipment.
They go with hand and hand?
To provide, to provide a constant security, no matter what the power situation is. Our telephones will work, cameras will work.
Sounds like a backup system to that.
Yes.
Okay, all right, thank you.
This is all a component that was talked about in the, we've been purchasing things all along for the new phone system.
Yes.
We call it a phone system, but it's much more than a phone system.
Yeah, it's a little bit of everything.
So, and this is going to support that system. Further discussion? Roll call vote?
Mrs. Walker?
Yes.
Ms. Hines?
Yes.
Mr. Neal, yes. Mr. Buckaloo?
Yes.
And President Cox?
Yes.
Five yea, motion carries.
We have a, next item on the agenda is 427.19, which is Board of Education Committee reports. The Policy Committee report from Mrs. Madell. Mrs. Madell is not here this evening. A summary of the meeting, which occurred on October 8th, 2019, from 6:30 to 8:30 p.m. in the Cabinet Room is as follows. Committee members present were Secretary Mark Neal substituting for Ms. Hines, Carol Madell. Staff was interim superintendent Jill Simmons and Tamara Phoenix, Administrative Assistant. The committee reviewed and discussed the remaining items from the board operating procedures to complete the updating of the BOP. The committee also reviewed and discussed the board policy updates that were recommended by the district's attorney, Lusk Albertson. The policies will be taken to the board at this meeting and voted on. There were no comments from the interim superintendent during the meeting, and there were no comments from members of the board during that meeting, which adjourned at 7:34 p.m. So, next item on the agenda is the vote on the revisions to the board operating procedures. These operating procedures are items 1 through 4 in your agenda. They can be voted on as one. Is there a motion? I'll move.
Support.
Moved by Mr. Buckaloo, support by Mrs. Walker. Is there discussion?
I have, first of all, I'm impressed with this whole thing. If anyone could enlighten me on the, on the phrase newly elected, which appears not only in these first four changes, but elsewhere, does that, would that be a reference to all seven of us as we begin our new year? And again, I'm just curious.
Mrs. Walker?
Well, I was thinking, in this particular one, I have a problem with it in one that we haven't got to. But in this particular one, where they said the board secretary, as last year, when I was president, I called, like, Mr. Neal was coming on. So because we have to make that decision, which is kind of redundant to me anyway, because in December, you know, we have to make the decision if we're gonna run for one of the offices in January.
Correct.
So because they don't take their seat into January, it's to give them the opportunity to say if they would like to run for one of the officer seats.
So.
Because they're a part of the board. So that's why that particular thing says newly elected, because they're not there yet.
So if I would understand you then going to this January, when we have no changes to the board, this is a nice little phrase that has no meaning to us.
It has no meaning at all, because we all will be here to make the decision.
That's fine.
I mean, in December. But going forward, when we get ready in 2020, at the December summer, we'll have asked that person coming on if they have any interest.
I appreciate that. Thank you very much.
Is there other discussion? Roll call vote?
Mrs. Walker?
Yes.
Ms. Hines?
Yes.
Myself, yes. Mr. Buckaloo?
Yes.
And President Cox?
Yes.
Five yea, motion carries.
Next item on the agenda is 429.19, which is the review and approval of board policy revision updates. All of these will be taken individually. Number one, 1,000.01, is conflict of interest. The changes in the conflict of interest paragraph, once again, have conflict of interest. If a member of the immediate family, father, mother, husband, wife, son, daughter, sister, brother-in-law, father-in-law, mother-in-law, son-in-law, daughter-in-law, sister-in-law, brother-in-law, or step-family members of a, the change would be the words newly elected board member is already an employee of the school district, such board members shall abstain from voting on any matter affecting the employment status of that employee. Recommended motion. Is there a motion of approval?
So move.
Moved by Hines, is there support? Support. Support by Buckaloo, is there discussion?
I have a statement.
Mrs. Walker?
I really don't understand why we are putting newly elected into this one, because a conflict of interest should affect everyone on the board, whether you're here, whether you're new or not. So everyone should make that, let that be known if they have a family member or something. It shouldn't just be held to the new, newly elected. So I feel that we can, that that actually should be able to stay the same. We shouldn't make any changes to it.
Yes, and, and, and employment situations can change during the year for people that have held their seat for many years.
Right.
So, I agree. I, I think that one personally, is there other discussion?
No, it sounds reasonable to me.
I'm, I agree with you.
I understand the concept, though I know that they probably thought that, okay, the people who are already here probably have already stated that they have someone. But things can change, or it could have been something that we hadn't talked about before. And so therefore, a person that's already been on the board would need to make that known again.
I believe what they're trying to, to do is maybe inform people who have not had the experience. People who are sitting on the board know that there is a policy of this nature. Maybe new members wouldn't and have to be informed, but I, I agree. It, it needs work. I think it needs work. Okay, let's call a vote.
So we should just vote it out?
I would, until, work on it again and see it again. Mr. Neal?
Calling for the vote. Ms. Hines?
So we are voting to take it off the list?
Yes, well, we're voting yes or no. You made the motion, supported by Buckaloo. Now we're voting on yes or no.
To keep it the same, or just?
To, to, as you, as you moved.
Okay.
To defeat this motion.
I'll just say no. Yeah.
To defeat this motion. We have to vote no to defeat this motion.
That's right.
Okay, so I say no.
Yeah, Ms. Heinz, yeah, no. Okay, I got it. Uh, myself, no.
Are you gonna call me?
Oh, yeah, I guess, uh, not you, Mr. Buckaloo.
No.
Mrs. Walker, no.
No.
And President Cox?
No.
That's five yay. Motion does not carry.
Motion fails. Uh, section two is two thousand point oh six, has to do with food service. And this is the recommended, uh, language. Students are prohibited from ordering delivery food during the school day, either directly from a restaurant, or through smartphone applications and websites, such as Grubhub, DoorDash, and Uber Eats. Any food deliveries will be confiscated by the front office, and at the discretion of the front office may either be retrieved at the end of the school day, or discarded. Violation of this policy may result in student discipline. Do I hear a motion?
Can I just say times have really changed?
So Mr. Spicoli is going to have to eat whatever the cafeteria offers. Is there a motion? I'll move it. Mr. Buckaloo, support?
Support.
Support by Mr. Neal. Discussion?
I do have a question, though. So have we taken, so I know that everything that we have comes from the attorney. Is this something that has come up in other districts as well? You know, where did, is it just because those are blowing up? Where did this policy come from?
Uh, safety.
Okay.
Uh, people being on school property, uh, uh, for this kind of a, of a thing is just dangerous.
I'm having something else in there besides DoorDash.
Yes, right.
Yeah. Okay. Just wondering.
With all the changing laws, you know.
Alright, thank you.
Further discussion?
I could add that I can see, uh, a building administrator's mind turning when, when faced with the possibility of having, at the high school, a thousand kids ordering lunch out.
I was thinking if you were in the front office, you might have your choice of lunch that day.
Well, that's a possibility. There's no question about that. And I was thinking, too, that if we vote in favor of this, that could be grounds for recall.
We can only hope.
Will the kids be aware of this new policies before they start? Because I don't want them just wasting their money. Right.
It's not allowed now.
Okay.
It's not allowed now. It's just, we're stating it. So, further discussion? Roll call vote, Mr. Neal? Let's call everyone this time?
Yes. Ms. Heinz?
Yes.
Myself, yes. Mr. Buckaloo?
Yes.
Mrs. Walker?
Yes.
And President Cox?
Yes.
Five, uh, yay.
Thank you. The next item, under, uh, board policy revisions, is three thousand point oh one, having to do with curriculum. And the paragraph begins, "The board directs the superintendent to develop, implement, and provide ongoing evaluation of the school district's curriculum", and ends with the words, "Any changes to the curriculum must be approved by the board", those being the changes. Do I hear a motion?
So moved.
Moved by Mr. Buckaloo, support?
Support.
Support by Mr. Neal. Discussion?
Um, what do you mean by the changes coming of the curriculum coming?
Previously, the paragraph read that the superintendent is responsible for the development, implementation, and to provide ongoing evaluation of the school district's curriculum. And any changes to the curriculum, uh, were not necessarily, have to be approved by the board. This is changed so that the board directs the superintendent, and the board, uh, is the one that approves any changes to the curriculum.
Why?
Well, because we're the seven people that the community elected to make these decisions.
I understand that, but in the, as far as curriculum go, is that within our privy of, when we talk about policies and things like that, when we talk about standing our lane as board members?
That actually...
We have put people in place that's supposed to know the, you know, know what they're talking about when it comes to curriculum.
This is a, uh, this is a very appropriate and, uh, important question. This, this is, I'm sorry, Tom?
I'm sorry, um, I'm, I'm being rude here. Might I ask, uh, uh, might I ask Ms. Curry a question?
Thank you. Go ahead.
Sure, well, I'm, I'm interested. I'm eager to have this conversation. So Ms. Curry, if you can add something to it, please do.
So I guess I go along the lines of clarity. So right now, any changes in curriculum could mean a wide range of things. It could mean adoption of new curriculum, which we would always bring to the board. It could mean adding a course to our course guide. It could be adding certain textbooks to a course we already have. So truly, it's a really big picture. So, from my perspective, to have that clearly defined would be very helpful for my department.
And if it's your department and that's what you like, then more power to you. You can get that. But I just want to make sure that we're not stepping on your toes.
Yeah, and I, I mean, I'm all about keeping everybody informed. I would just need clarity on, you know, defining what changes mean. Because there are sometimes changes, such as we're adding a course, taking away a course, and so forth. And that kind of happens on a continued basis, sometimes due to staffing, right? We have to change a course, because we don't have a teacher in place.
And so that's where my question, because I know that big stuff has come to us, but does that mean every little minor thing, everything that they do?
I think this is such a, uh, important question, because really what it deals with is, what are all of our roles? As the Board of Education, we s- we certainly have the role of approving the expenditure of money and contracts. Everyone knows that. But beyond that, what is our role? Is our role merely to hire a superintendent, and then put the superintendent in the chair? And whatever that superintendent so decides to do is the direction of our school district? Actually, this body is set up so that the legislative authority, the Board of Education, directs the superintendent that which should be done, whether it is contracts, or curriculum, or, uh, disciplinary issues. All of those things, which I will agree, over the years, and I, I first was here back in the nineteen nineties, so I know how it was done. It's typically done where the Board of Education are a group of people who do not themselves have experience as educators. Maybe they're not human resource experts, they're not experts in curriculum or the law. They're well-meaning members of the community that wanted to be involved, and ended up as elected members of the board. So, when those people sit, and then they tell someone who's a superintendent, who had spent their entire career in education, and they have all the certifications that we look for when we hire, are we going to tell them how to run the school district? No, we're not going to tell them how to do their job. But it's our job to tell them what we want accomplished. And taking curriculum, for instance, we purchased curriculum in the school district at the cost of millions of dollars, and yet, when you walk into some classrooms, the curriculum's still wrapped in cellophane, and that celli-, and it's sitting in a box in the corner of the room. The Board of Education has taken public money and bought a very expensive product. And what we want to do is, we want to implement the use of that product. It's not up to the superintendent as to whether or not it gets implemented. It's up to the Board of Education that it gets implemented. The superintendent would naturally be the administrative arm that accomplishes that, but the decision's made here. The only way that the public has any control over what happens is through us. The superintendent doesn't work for the public. Superintendent works for us, and we work for them. And I think that that's a very important question, because for a long time, it's been easy to sit back, especially in years where we had what, what so many considered to be, uh, very competent leadership, to stand back and, and let them, let them do what they do. And because we all were, in essence, in agreement with it. But when the time arrived that we're not in agreement with it, the authority rests with us to stop it. And I think that's one of the things that this speaks to. And again, I'll say, this did come from our attorney, as well as something in the committee work.
Might I add something?
Please.
So, curriculum comes at us from a variety of places. The state legislature gives us some very strong guidelines on what curriculum should look like in certain areas. In other areas, we take a look at things like, um, like reading at the ele-, at the elementary level. And I think that we let, uh, uh, Ms. Curry and her staff, uh, oversee the, that development piece, because, as you indicated, they're the professionals, they're the ones who have the expertise in curriculum. In all my years in education, I have to confess, I hated curriculum issues. I just despised them. So I don't really have any interest, much less expertise. But as a Board of Seven, we do have a responsibility to, to the community to make sure that curriculum is, is developed appropriately, and, and put into place appropriately. And I think that that's what this will cause us to do. That we will assume a greater share of the responsibility for curriculum, rather than simply directing the superintendent to do curriculum. We are saying, this is the curriculum that the board is responsible for. And so now we're vested to a degree we never were before. And I like that idea.
Absolutely. It really, Mr. Neal?
And also to speak to, uh, the comment that was made. I, I don't think the board would ever be interested in the minutia of adding and subtracting classes. It's more on the grander scale, the curriculum as a whole, that we're really talking about, and the overall, uh, responsibility for that curriculum. But not the daily ins and outs of adding things and subtracting things. But that would be fall under the, uh, superintendent, who has been directed already by the board to develop and implement.
Well, I'm thinking maybe the wording should be different at the end. Maybe that's where, um, the confusion is, but, okay.
You know, Mr. Buckaloo, you said something that, uh, and I don't want to get into the minutia, but what you did is you directed comments regarding the board directing Mrs. Curry. The board doesn't direct Mrs. Curry.
Did I say that?
Well, it seemed to me that that's what I said.
I hope I didn't, and I hope, I certainly don't, didn't mean to imply that.
Right, and it's important to recognize, the board does not, uh, does not direct anybody in the school district. No principal, uh, nobody in the executive. The board's relationship is with the superintendent. And the superintendent has the authority to direct, and only the superintendent. It'd be chaos if it was otherwise, because the fact is, we're not educational professionals. And even if we have spent our career in educational professionals, we're not the people that the board has chosen for that role. And it's like you say, Mr. Neal, there's, it, it plays to accountability. If you take all of the responsibility of the board, and you dump it on the superintendent, here, you're responsible for curriculum, then they're also responsible for every failure. And that can't be that way. The Board of Education is the one that appropriates the money, and that directs the superintendent what to do. And the superintendent's success at carrying that mission out is how they should be judged, and only that. And I think that's what, that's what this particular paragraph speaks to. So, do we have, we didn't have a motion on this?
Yeah.
Did we? Roll call vote. Is there further discussion? Roll call vote, Mr. Neal?
Myself, yes. Mr. Buckaloo?
Yes.
Mrs. Walker?
No.
Ms. Heinz?
No.
President Cox?
Yes.
Motion fails to have a forum.
Motion fails, yes.
The next item on the agenda is four thousand point oh three, medical examinations. Is there a motion?
So moved.
Moved by Buckaloo, support?
Support.
Support by Mr. Neal. Discussion?
I have a question.
Yes, ma'am.
So is this something that normally follows in our policy, or is this something that normally comes under adminis-, the administrative? What's that?
Guidelines.
Guidelines. Does anyone know the answer to that? Because we have some that are administrative guidelines, and then we have the policies that we set forth. This looks to me like it's something that should be under administrative guidelines. I could be wrong.
Is there other discussion?
Just to add that the, uh, the only changes to what we would normally approve are that, that's in red and blue. So it must already exist in our guidelines.
And once again, is it even, is it in the right place? Or the right category? Uh-huh. Okay, so it never was under administrative guidelines?
It might be under vote.
Okay.
Possibility that they're under vote, but when, when I was doing the particular update, it fell under policy.
Okay.
Is there other discussion? Roll call vote?
Mr. Buckaloo?
Yes.
Mrs. Walker?
Yes.
Ms. Heinz?
Yes.
Myself, yes. President Cox?
Yes.
Five yay. Motion carries.
Next item is four thousand point zero five, the Code of Ethics. The school district expects all individuals working with or for its students to comply with all applicable professional codes of ethics, including the Michigan Code of Educational Ethics, as approved by the Michigan Department of Education. Is there a motion?
So moved.
Moved by Heinz, support?
Support.
Support by Neal. Discussion? Roll call vote?
Mrs. Walker?
Yes.
Ms. Heinz?
Yes.
Myself, yes. Mr. Buckaloo?
Yes.
And President Cox?
Yes.
Five yay. Motion carries.
Uh, five thousand point oh two, the board is required to adopt a budget prior to July first of each year to be in place for the ensuing school year. The budget is formalized statement of anticipated revenues and expenditures of the district, and includes all district fund categories that are used to carry out the district's educational goals and objectives. The budget will be prepared and published in conformity with, and these are the changes, the most recent applicable general, general accounting principles, fifty-four requirements, and will maintain an end-of-the-year general fund balance that should not fall below, and this is a change, eight percent. Do I hear a motion?
So moved.
Moved by Buckaloo, support?
Support.
Support by Neal. Discussion?
Quick question.
Just, just one thing.
Mr. Buckaloo?
I apologize.
No, you go, you go, because I was trying to figure out what was it before. Was it ten?
Five.
Five?
Five.
Okay.
Um, as you read it, uh, we're keeping, I guess, before fifty-four, and, and that's being, uh, that's being deleted. We're just going with GASP.
Oh, thank you. Thank you, yes. Okay. So once again, the record should reflect the most recent applicable GASP requirements, rather than GASP fifty-four. And the fund balance, uh, shall not fall below eight percent now, as opposed to five.
Uh, remind me again what the law is for the, is it five that we, we put it right at the minimum when they, uh, if it falls before, when they start to?
Right. Five, five percent is the amount where they start knocking on the door, and we don't, we want to be three points away from that.
Okay.
So, and been talked about that, uh, in detail.
In prior years, we did have a five to ten, as opposed to just a flat five.
Right, right. Further discussion? Roll call vote, please, Mr. Neal?
Mrs. Walker?
Yes.
Ms. Heinz?
Yes.
Myself, yes. Mr. Buckaloo?
Yes.
And President Cox?
Yes.
Five yay. Motion carries.
Next issue is seven, is five thousand point one zero. The board shall maintain a fixed asset procedure sufficient to track applicable purchases and donations of items, meeting the following criteria. This area, this has been augmented to include, along with land and buildings, and, uh, construction and project, to include vehicles. Is there a motion?
So moved.
Moved by Mrs. Walker, support? Support, support by Mr. Buckaloo. Discussion? Roll call vote, Mr. Neal?
Ms. Heinz?
Yes.
Myself, yes. Mr. Buckaloo?
Yes.
Mrs. Walker?
Yes.
President Cox?
Yes.
Five yay. Motion carries.
Item, uh, item eight, and the last item, is volunteers. Uh, and I'm going to read the entire paragraph. It is all new. The board encourages the use of volunteers to support the school district. Because the safety of the school district's students is of paramount importance, every individual volunteer is required to undergo a criminal background check through the Michigan State Police Internet Criminal History Access Tool, also known as iChat, before he or she is permitted to volunteer. Regardless of whether or not the volunteer will work directly with students, iChat criminal background checks will be performed annually for each volunteer. No individual is allowed to violate the school's curriculum. No individual will be permitted to volunteer if he or she has been convicted of a misdemeanor described in or a felony that is a listed offense as defined in Michigan Case Law three eight zero point fifteen thirty-five A or Michigan Case Law three eighty point fifteen thirty-nine B. If an individual has been convicted of a felony that is not a listed offense as defined in Michigan Case Law three eighty fifteen thirty-five A or fifteen thirty-nine B, the individual may only be permitted to volunteer if the Board and the superintendent both approve the volunteer assignment in writing. This policy does not grant any individual who passes an iChat background check with the right to be approved as a volunteer. Do I hear a motion?
So moved.
Mr. Buckle, support?
Support.
By Mr. Neal. Discussion? Hearing none. Roll call, vote.
Ms. Heinz?
Yes.
Myself, yes. Mr. Buckle?
Yes.
Mrs. Walker?
Yes.
President Cox?
Yes.
Five yeas.
Next item on the agenda is the Head Start Report, four thirty point one nine.
I'll make a motion that we accept the Head Start Report.
Motion by Mrs. Walker.
So moved.
Support by Mrs. Heinz. Let's see here. As required by federal law, the Board trustees received a copy of the report from the Wayne Metro Head Start for the month of September. And there's been a motion made, been support. Is there discussion? Roll call, vote, Mr. Neal.
Myself, yes. Mr. Buckle?
Yes.
Mrs. Walker?
Yes.
Ms. Heinz?
Yes.
President Cox?
Yes.
Five yeas. Motion carries.
Thank you. Next item on the agenda is four three one point one nine, which is citizens' comments on non-agenda items. Any citizens wishing to address the Board on non-agenda items, please fill out a blue form. We'd be happy to hear from you. Are there any? Seeing? Pardon me?
I didn't fill out a form.
Will you, you can do so afterwards for us?
Sure.
Go up and introduce yourself, please.
Hi, my name is Matt with Gateway Family Worship Center, and I do have two kids in our wonderful school district. Just wanted to give you a quick update on the basketball camp that we're doing. So far, we've had eighty-three young men between the ages of sixth and ninth grade come through the doors on the three Saturdays we've been going. It's gone wonderful so far. We're very excited. The average attendance is sixty at each event. So it's been, just so you're aware, and you're all invited any Saturday you'd like to come. Dr. Townsend's already come and helped out. He's going to be there every chance he can, and it's been wonderful. I did have a thought on your issue you were having with curriculum. My thinking would be is that you would want the superintendent or staff to guide that and then the Board to approve that. Maybe that's the verbiage that is missing instead of the Board having, sounding in that speech has sounded like the Board had full control. I would want the educator to have control and then you to approve. That makes sense to me. Just thought. All right, have a great day.
Thank you, Pastor. Anyone else? Move on then to the review and recommendations, members of the Board of Education. Ms. Heinz?
Yes. So it's been a pretty good week. We had homecoming. Even though it rained, we still was at the game anyway and it was a great game. The other night, the class of nineteen ninety-seven, which I'm a member of, we had a fundraiser over at US twelve for a Lavelle guest who was inducted in the Hall of Fame as well as Lorenzo, Lorenzo and Lavelle guest. And one of my classmates, Lorenzo, has ALS, so we were able to raise over a thousand dollars to help support him and his family. And we were talking like with our alumni group, we are really good at fundraising. So we want to do more to help some of our classmates that do fall into need. So we're thinking about getting together more often to have little fundraisers and events. And it was nice because it was like almost like an all-class reunion. So it was just like the love. It was so nice to see the community come together and just meet up, have a good time. You know, it was a very simple fundraiser, but we were able to raise a lot of money. But I really do want to find out who's ever in charge of the Alumni Association to kind of talk with them and see what we can do to work together. Because even with some of the college students, I graduated from Saginaw Valley, but I would love to mentor any child or college kid that's at Saginaw Valley because I could maybe give them some pointers. So you know, if that's something I can work with the counselors to do, to kind of help them get at least through their first year, because I have a lot of relationships over there. And there's another organization. I'm actually a top lady of distinction, and we are looking for top teams. So what they do is they do a lot in the community. It's an organization. They've been around quite a while. But the nice thing about it, they help with the St. Jude's Children Research March Dimes fundraiser. They do Healthy Choices, STEM, Science and Technology. They have scholarships. There's a really good program for getting scholarships for our children, especially like the kids that's in upper bound National Honor Society. They do a lot of community surveys. We work with the seniors. They help with job entrepreneurship and mentoring, because I'm like one of the advisors on there. So we mentor like the young teens. They kind of help them become better citizens. So I know they're actually taking applications now. I have a Lady Rosalyn Billberry Smith. Her number is seven three four three five 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 zero zero nine. And I can see if I can get this out, but they have applications due. I know it's kind of short notice to the twenty-fifth, but I really want to find different mentoring programs. Like the pastor said, I think that is so awesome, having the programs for kids because they don't really have outlets. Like when we were kids, they had parks in every neighborhoods, you know, and there was ways to get out and, you know, fellowship among other children in the community. But this would be a really good program to help, you know, guide children in the right direction. So I'm trying to get that information out to you guys if anybody's interested, especially the ones going to college because it looks really good on a resume. And, hey, that's about it. I know the seasons are changing. I do give my sympathy to the family that lost their student over, was it last week? The family at Franklin. Yeah, so I do definitely give my condolences on that, and I really hate to see us, you know, lose a student. That was very sad. But just moving forward, just do the best we can do. Come together, show love, and in order to give love, that's just what God wants us to do. So, you know, just be nice to each other. And that's all I got to say.
Thank you, Mrs. Walker.
Nothing this evening. Thank you.
Mr. Buckle?
Yes, thanks to Kenny and Charlie and Savannah from Hamilton for getting us off to a good start. It's always good to have young people here and show their stuff. I'd like to offer my special thanks to the Policy Committee. Got a couple of pages of typing changes, but getting those words on paper is not a simple thing. I know there was a lot of gnashing of teeth, a lot of discussion, a lot of hard work to get that done. And I appreciate that the effort that they put forward, bringing this to us this month and other changes in previous months. So thanks again to those folks. And bond construction, if you're wondering, one hundred and fifty-eight million dollars, and you don't see anything happening in our school district. Well, you might not be seeing it, but it is happening. Bids are going out, plans are being created and reworked. We're expanding on what we thought we were going to do at Voc Tech. I was just talking to Chef Tony this morning, and he is just ecstatic with the fact that he's going to get his new kitchen. He's going to have a new dining area, and he couldn't be happier. In fact, he's even talking about having to close down his kitchen in April before the school year ends. And he's looking to see if he can't rent a food truck and use that with some of his students. So anyway, the bonds construction is alive and well. And even though you may not be seeing it at work, it is definitely at work with switches and UPSs and all of those good things going forward. This morning, I attended the wall raising. Mrs. Medel was there, Mr. Neal was there, interim Superintendent Simmons, Dr. Townsend, and Mrs. Johnson, and a whole lot of other people that I probably have forgotten, and I apologize. But we all bent down and lifted that wall and got it up and watched the kids nail it in place. It's a good start to the tenth year of the partnership with the City of Westland in construction trades. And I might add that prior to the ten years of Westland partnership, we've been building houses in this school district for years prior, and they are some of the finest homes in the community. And with that, thank you.
Thank you, Mr. Buckle. Mr. Neal?
Yes, the wall raising ceremony, I had a chance to talk to some of the students involved before we actually got to lift the wall. And I'll tell you, I was so impressed by their enthusiasm. It was so wonderful to hear them talk about how excited they were not only to learn construction, but to hopefully apply that in the near future. In fact, a couple of them said they already work on the side once in a while as a laborer for construction people because of their enthusiasm. And they can't say enough praise about our program and the people who run that program, how wonderful it is. So that was a tremendous experience for myself. Also, at our last special meeting, we did begin a discussion, a light discussion, on looking to the future, looking for a new superintendent. And we are lucky at this point to have Mrs. Simmons and our central office staff, all of them working well together to keep us going. But I would like to see some activity from the Board to help us develop criteria, develop a process so that we can move forward and select a new superintendent. That's all I have to say.
Thank you, Mr. Neal. And I too would like to thank Kenny Gagnon, Charlie Grant, and Savannah Quarles of Hamilton Elementary for leading us in the pledge. I'm always amazed by how in control these kids are. They're just not afraid of a thing. And it's wonderful to have them here. It's a highlight of the meeting for me. Tonight, we did two things having to do with security in our schools. And one had to do with the battery backup so that our security system works when power is interrupted, so that our telephones work and so that our video works. And the other issue had to do with policy relative to volunteers and what people were going to allow to be in contact with our children. And probably you share my feeling that we wish that we didn't have to, but we do. And we intend to be very serious about it every step of the way. The system that we're installing is a serious system. It's state of the art. And this policy obviously is a very serious policy. So I'm happy to see that, and I know that you're going to see much more in that regard, the safety of the children and our buildings and our employees is the chief, most important thing to this Board of Education. And with respect to what Mr. Neal said, I share your sentiment that Ms. Simmons serving in this capacity makes me calm and I'm happy, but I'm not going to take that gift lightly. I'm going to use it. We have to define what kind of a, what kind of a district we're going to have going forward. And that means what kind of leadership that we're going to have and who that person should be. And one of the considerations that goes along with that is this school district requires the hiring of several people in key positions. Mr. Kling has been just about the Lone Ranger in the Finance Department for so long. It's not fair, frankly. There's way too much work for him to do. He needs to have help. And people that are looking for jobs, they want to have some stability. They would like to know, who is the superintendent going to be? So we're, on the one hand, we're also happy with people that we know that can handle it, that are doing a great job. But it's important that we put down roots too and head in a particular direction. And much like curriculum, that direction has to come from the Board of Education. What does the Board, what does the community want that they answer through the Board of Education that the Board then gives to the administrator to run with? What kind of superintendent are you looking for? What kind of talents based upon your experience do you want them to have? We're going to have to know all of those things if we're going to even contract with somebody to help us find that person. If we don't know what person we're looking for, we can't tell the person helping us to find that person who to look for. So I'm going to be sending out a letter this week to members of the Board, letting them know that we're going to have a study session on this. And in advance of that study session, I'd like you to think about what kind of qualities you'd like to see in a superintendent and what are your concerns for the district moving forward? And some of the things that come to my mind immediately, our finances with Mr. Kling, are the implementation of this bond initiative. It is the implementation of the curriculum, the security issues, all the things we've been talking about the last few meetings. What would the superintendent's answers be relative to some of the test score results that we're dealing with? What's your answer to improve that? We're going, somebody's going to need to deal with those things, and we're going to have to choose the person who that's going to be. So we have to know what kind of talents we're looking for. So I will be this coming week sending an email to every member of the Board to that effect. So thank you, everyone, for attending this evening. And with that, I'll entertain a motion to adjourn.
So moved. Second.
Mr. Neal, support by Mr. Buckle. Those in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Those opposed, no. We're adjourned.